Hello, welcome to the City Council's June 29th Special City Council Meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. Hello, my name is Drew Combs. I'm Mayor of Menlo Park for 2021. I'd like to introduce staff and city council members present. Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, city council members Cecilia Taylor, Injun Willison, city council member Ray Mueller will be joining us in a few minutes. Staff present include city manager Starla Jerome Robinson, city attorney Neera Doherty, and city clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs, and again echoing a welcome to our special study session meeting of June 29th. Members of the city council, we ask that you remain on screen for the duration of the meeting, engaging your own webcams and microphones. Staff will engage our webcams and microphones to respond to city council questions. For members of the public who are here to speak on tonight's agenda item, after the mayor calls for a public comment, we ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or cellphone, you may press star nine at that time. That does conclude my introductions at this time.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron, and as the city clerk suggested, obviously, there's one item on the study session, on the agenda for the study session, and it's looking at the redistricting options. So just really quickly, study sessions are an opportunity for the city staff to introduce an item that will require policy direction from the city council in the near future. City staff will provide a brief presentation. I will then call for public comment. After public comment, the city council will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The city council will not take an action on items addressed in study sessions. The city council may provide direction to city staff for preparation of additional analysis or information necessary when the items return to the city council for action. So item C1, consider establishing a hybrid independent redistricting commission for the upcoming redistricting process following the release of the 2020 census results. Here to introduce the item is City Clerk Heron.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. And actually, at this time, I'm going to be introducing our demographers from Geo Novo. Our program managers is Lucie Anne Musa and Alex Sines, and our demographer, Jesus Garcia. They will be providing the presentation this evening. Alex, you should have the ability to screen share and you can start when ready.
No, perfect. Just wanted to make sure that we were good to go here. So, all right. And if everybody could just give a affirmative when they can see my screen.
Looks good. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, so without further ado, my name is Alex Sines. I'm the GS project manager for Geo Novo Solutions, and today, for this evening, I'll be presenting for the study session for demographic analysis and census mapping. And without further ado, let's dive right in. We'll go ahead and kick off the presentation with a brief intro to the Geo Novo team. Lucie Anne Musa is the founder and CEO of Geo Novo. She'll be the project manager, the program manager for this project. She is a GS professional with over 20 years of industry experience. She is OSHA certified and earned her BA in geography from University of Alabama. Lucie Anne is an Esri product expert, including geovent, real-time mapping, demographics, and analytics. Jesus Garcia has over 30 years of experience in data analytics and GIS, and is serving as the main demographer for this project. He has a master's in urban planning from UCLA as an expert in redistricting. He has served as a subject matter expert in over 20 California Voting Rights Act cases, and has served as an advisor to move district boundaries to achieve compliance with federal and California Voting Rights Act. He worked as a demographic statistician for five years at the US Census Bureau's Population Division in Washington DC. And Jesus is also an expert with Esri's ArcGIS platform, and will be collaborating with the GIS team throughout this project. My name's Alex Sines, and I'll be the project manager with Geo Novo and coordinating with our team and city of Menlo Park throughout the redistricting process. I have 13 years of experience as a GS professional, supporting single and multi-agency local government projects. My areas of expertise include GS administration, web map configuration, and leading GS projects. My project experience with local government includes supporting application integrations, ArcGIS enterprise deployments, and implementation of GS best practices. The primary goal for this study session is to provide relevant information to the city council regarding key aspects of the redistricting process. We will provide an overview of five redistricting models and provide relevant examples currently being utilized in other jurisdictions. We will also review the project tasks and services provided by Geo Novo during this project. The rough project schedule provided in our proposal is based on the release of 2020 census data. Due to delays caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, the estimated release date of US census data has been delayed to approximately September 30th, 2021. We will also provide map templates for the council's consideration. And to wrap up the presentation, we will provide a brief demo of the interactive mapping tools and dashboard that will be provided for the redistricting project. There are five redistricting options available for the council's consideration. The first three options are commission-based models. Independent advisory and hybrid commissions are all formed similarly, but they have varying degrees of autonomy and authority associated with each model. The fourth option is contracting with the county registering commission. And the fifth and final option is a council-based redistricting model. There are some important factors to consider when deciding which model to adopt for redistricting. These factors include, but are not limited to, the following items. Time commitment, and this is for staff and city council to execute the process, the appearance of transparency, and the level of community engagement, and compliance with federal and state voting laws. As previously stated, the three commission-based models are formed very similarly, but there are some key differences. Independent commissions are the most transparent process and transfer redistricting authority from the city council or legislative body to the commission. The independent commission is free to engage with the community and organize meetings without interference from elected officials. An advisory commission gathers information and input from the community and advises city council regarding updates to district boundaries. Under this model, city council is able to accept recommendations from the commission or make changes to district boundaries at their discretion. As the name implies, this commission plays an advisory role under this model. Hybrid commissions are formed similarly to independent commissions. The application process must be open to all eligible residents, and the commissioners are not directly appointed by the legislative body or an elected official of the local jurisdiction. Another key point for the hybrid commission is that at least two, so two or more, redistricting maps will be provided to the city council. And city council must select one of the options presented. So the first three were commission-based models. The fourth option is to contract with the county registering commission. Under this model, the commission must hold at least three public hearings. However, San Mateo County does not have an independent redistricting commission at this time, which makes this option not applicable to city of Menlo Park. The fifth option is the city council-driven redistricting process. Under this model, the city council draws and approves district boundaries, provided they are in compliance with state and federal voting laws. This is the most resource-intensive option for city council as the legislative body takes on all duties related to the redistricting process. Depending on the level of community engagement, this model may not appear as transparent as the other models and has the possibility of appearing bias in the process. Some current examples of independent commissions include the city of Berkeley and Tulare County. An example for hybrid commission is city of Chilavista, right here in Southern California where Geo Novo is located. And an example of a council-driven redistricting process is city of Bakersfield. Community engagement is an important element of the redistricting process. An independent commission with autonomy has the ability to enhance the perception of transparency. A hybrid commission preserves the ability of the community to engage within the redistricting process with increased oversight from the board or council on the commission. And then a non-commission, or in this case, it'd be council-driven redistricting process, time constraints may limit the ability of the board or council to digest or consider all community input during the redistricting process. Transparency in action. What does this mean? So there are certain actions and/or services city can provide during the redistricting process that may enhance transparency. This is not an exhaustive list, but it highlights some of the services Geo Novo has observed in other jurisdictions. Examples include a glossary of terms on the city's website, maps of existing city council district boundaries, links to redistricting resources from outside organizations such as Common Cause. It seems to be an example, a local example here in Menlo Park. A digital dashboard and mapping, which Geo Novo will be providing to the city of Menlo Park. And supplemental information regarding service types have been provided to city clerk Heron and city manager, which were included in the staff report. We will now move on to a brief overview of the relevant laws to the redistricting process. We'll go ahead and start with the Federal Voting Rights Act. Section 2 of the Federal Voting Rights Act of 1965 prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, or membership in a language minority group. Unquote. The next relevant law to highlight is the California Voting Rights Act. This law prohibits the use of an at-large election in a political subdivision if it would impair the ability of a protected class, as defined, to elect candidates of its choice or otherwise influence the outcome of an election. City of Menlo Park has already adopted district-based elections. Therefore, this item is not applicable. Congratulations on being ahead of the game on this one. The intent of the California Fair Maps Act is to encourage transparency during the redistricting process. This item is applicable to city redistricting, like what we're doing here in Menlo Park. Geo Novo will collaborate with the city to ensure the redistricting process complies with the California Fair Maps Act. City council may be familiar with redistricting criteria leading up to this process. However, we felt that this information is important enough to highlight on its own slide during the presentation. To the extent practicable, council districts shall follow the following criteria. Be roughly equal in population, comply with state and federal voting law, be geographically contiguous, follow city and census designated place or CDP geography, follow major features, and maintain geographic compactness. Some other non-technical criteria that should be considered is the exclusion of political party preference and the preservation of communities of interest. Okay, so we've made it through the redistricting models and laws governing the process. We will now provide an overview of the project plan and tasks, including project planning, community engagement, review of district maps, and potential boundaries. And finally, the adoption of the final map. So let's get right into it. Task one is going to be project planning. This is a key goal of today's study session. Geo Novo will provide training and information to the city council regarding the redistricting process, including applicable federal and state laws. Geo Novo has already begun collaborating with Menlo Park city staff to prepare staff reports and presentation materials. Similar support will be provided in preparation for public hearings. And towards the end of the presentation, map templates will be provided to the council for consideration. Community engagement is an important element of the redistricting process. This task is also the most variable for all stakeholders involved, including city council, staff, and the community. Geo Novo will deploy and provide training for the use of the districtor.org digital mapping interface. And Geo Novo will collaborate with the city for information gathering and input from communities of interest. Task three will be the review of district boundaries. So maps submitted during the redistricting process will be evaluated for population balance and demographics such as ethnicity and voting age population. Existing council districts will be evaluated for compliance with Section 2 of the Federal Voting Rights Act and the California Voting Rights Act. Task four includes presentation of initial maps and related tasks. Geo Novo will assist city staff with the preparation of staff reports and presentation materials for public hearings as maps are developed and evaluated. This task also includes presentation of 1990 through 2020 US census data such as trends by city and council districts. Task five will be the adoption of the final map. This is where all the work in tasks one through four really starts to pay off. Final maps are presented for adoption. Geo Novo will submit all GIS data, block equivalency files, and other supporting materials to city staff in the requested formats. And we will also provide necessary data and materials to city staff for submission of the adopted maps to the county registrar of votes. So let me go ahead and bring up some map templates. So, yeah, let me just bring those up here. Bear with me here. Okay. And can everybody see the maps coming up on the screen there?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, perfect. So we've got the last one coming up. So we wanted to present some options. So these maps or these map templates, they're all produced with flexibility and ease of production in mind. The city council is free to approve or finalize the look and feel for available map templates for use in production mapping. So just as an example, the selected maps or the selected map template that we, city council decides to go with will be used in staff reports, electronic files posted on the city website, and/or printed maps offered to the public during the redistricting process. So map one, you know, it's just a basic portrait layout. All of these are eight and a half by 11, so they should be quite compatible with any staff report or standard printing that we may need to do during the redistricting process. Map two, you know, map two and three are both landscape format, but they have, you know, slightly different slightly different layouts to them, you know, just depending on the preferred look and feel by the city council. And then we'll go ahead and take a look at map three. Again, all of these are designed for flexibility and ease of production. We feel very strongly about all three and leave it up to the city council to decide which one they would like to adopt. Geo Novo would like to provide a brief demonstration of the districtor.org digital mapping interface. So without further ado, let's go ahead and jump into districtor.org. Can everybody see the map on the screen there?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, so the districtor.org, it's intended to be a mapping tool that the public can use. It's all web-based. You know, there's a bar of tools here at the top. You have, you know, just a typical pan, a pan tool. Typically, zooming in and out is done with a scroll wheel on the mouse or on a mobile device. It could be done by, you know, pinching in and out for zoom. The paintbrush here allows, and you can see the, as I go around the map, I could start by selecting an individual, just any color on the color palette, and I'll just start adding adding census blocks to this draft district. And as you can see here, as census blocks are added to the draft, you'll see the population go up. I could do the same thing for my next district. And as you can see, on the, in the bottom right here, we want to keep the districts as balanced as possible. Keep this deviation as small as possible. Usually 10% is a good maximum, but if we can keep it, you know, even lower than that, you know, close to, you know, identical balance as much as possible. That's always, that's always a good thing. That's best practice. So in case a user maybe wants to go back and take some census blocks away from the draft district that they're drawing, there's this erase tool. Again, very easy, just kind of see which census blocks are highlighted and really just, you know, click to erase, and you'll see the, you'll see the population figures also adjusting on the little bar there. So let's go ahead and move. So this is the population tab, and as you can see from the bars, the interactive bars, as as draft districts are drawn, the population numbers are changing along with the unassigned population and the population deviation. Data layers. Say, for example, there's the community is able to use this tool called Coalition Builder. So for example, if there's a strong community group or neighborhood with Hispanic, Asian, African-American presence, you know, they can click on whatever boxes they want here, whatever boxes may be applicable to their coalition, and use that Coalition Builder to track their progress as they're drawing their draft districts. Which is a pretty useful tool. You can also show the population here, and there's different variables that can be chosen depending on the coalition that is being built for that user, for that draft district. And then this evaluation tool, I think this is actually a pretty useful tool. It provides community members who are drawing draft districts with with a very easy-to-use interface that really corresponds their districts by color and by the census blocks that have been selected, and it tells them. That's actually interactive, you know, you can see the changes as you update. And it'll update the demographic, the demographic categories on the fly. So you can see here, you can change any of the categories at your discretion, and that's a brief description of the evaluation tab. Drafts can also be saved. You can give your you can give your draft map a tag or event code, give it give it a team name, and you can go ahead and save it as a draft. You know, send the URL to community groups or, you know, other people that you might want to share your map with. And it's, yeah, we should be good to go on that one. Any questions on the district or mapping tool?
I think you can continue through the presentation, and certainly there may be when we get to questions.
Okay, okay, perfect. Yeah, I'll just go ahead and receive. Thank you, Mary Combs. Yeah, so the next item I'd like to demonstrate is the ArcGIS dashboard, which is just a sample. I mean, we don't, since the census data has not been released yet, we'll just go ahead and show a demo of a previous example that our demographer, Jesus Garcia, has helped us put together. The Geo Novo team did the primary consolidation of the GIS data. So as you can see here, this top row is going to be this is going to be PL 94 day, which that just, that just means that that's the official census data. So the 1990, 2000, 2010, and then these last two columns are just samples that we use from the American Community Survey for population estimates during that time period. And you can see these are proposed districts, and compared right next to it is the current districts. On the bottom row, and you'll see as I, once I started going through the map, that these all of these boxes here are quite interactive. So CVAP, which stands for Citizen Voting Age Population, we have by year. You can click on the current tab, which that just shows the population counts for the current council districts, or in this case, Board of Supervisors for Fresno County. And then proposed. And again, because everything's selected on all right now, you're just basically seeing the total population. But say we can click on an individual district, we'll take district two. And you'll see the values on the Y axis and the graphs and the bars change. And you'll also see the distribution of population. You know, the different ethnic groups, you'll see those values change as well interactively. So if we zoom, you know, you can zoom in now on the map. Again, it's pretty user-friendly. Everything's pre-configured. This sample here shows Latino or Hispanic population. We can toggle that off. Turn on African-American population. And it'll provide an update of legend and show you the counts for African-American population. You can turn that off and toggle on Asian population. And again, we can do this for as few or as many, as many demographic groups as are required for city of Menlo Park. We'll just go district three. Again, you can see the, as I click this tab here on the, on select district, it automatically updates the map to show you that boundary. The, if you'll notice, the dashed black boundary indicates the current the current Board of Supervisor District, and then the blue shows the proposed. And you can see the the population changes between. Yeah, so you'll see the pie charts and the bar graphs change interactively as changes are made throughout the map. So it's a, it's a pretty interactive tool. We think this is a very intuitive way, a very visually engaging way for community members to examine data and, you know, just see what's going on throughout the redistricting process. And, you know, just provide transparency for the demographic data provided by the US Census. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and switch back to the slideshow here. Yeah, and that concludes the demonstrations. We appreciate the opportunity to present to city council, staff, and community members this evening. And we would like to open up our questions. We will do our best to answer any questions that the council or community has at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sines. So next, City Clerk Heron, let's open it up. Let's call for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our study session item C1, consider establishing a hybrid independent redistricting commission for the upcoming redistricting process following the release of the 2020 census results. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a cellphone or a landline, you may press star nine now. Our first speaker will be Helen Greco.
Thank you. Are you going to show a time? So I know how much time I have.
Yes, I will display that in just a moment. Thanks. All right, Helen, go right ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Helen Greco. I'm the main California organizer for California Coming From and my duties are locally redistricting. You may recall that I've been working since 2017. And we went to the advisory committee.
Helen, pardon the interruption, but we're having a little trouble hearing you. Helen, pardon the interruption, but we're having a little trouble hearing you. Um, it sounds like you might be a little bit far from a microphone.
Let's see, um, does that help? Is that any louder?
That is better. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to restart or how are we doing?
Oh, I paused the time.
Okay, thanks.
Of course.
I'm assuming you heard that I'm Helen Greco. I'm the Northern California Organizer for California Common Cause. I work on redistricting. We all met, um, back in 217 when we worked on the Advisory Committee to put in the first districts for Menlo Park. Common Cause has a long history of 50-year history of working on good government. We were instrumental in the Independent Redistricting Commission that was established in 2010. For the state of California and we worked again on re-establishing that commission for the 2020 census. I'm here this evening just to make a strong recommendation for an independent redistricting commission because it is the gold standard. We believe that the transparency and empowering the residents to be involved in this process, it's only once every 10 years. And it does set up a lot of resources and services that the communities need and also helps to ensure their representation. Common Cause has tremendous resources. Thank you for noting that in your presentation, which I will say was a great presentation and I appreciate the mapping part of it. Once again, we're here for any questions you have answered and any resources you need. And we're happy to support the community and the City Council through the entire process. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. And our next speaker will be Pamela Jones.
Uh, good evening, uh, council and staff and company. I'm not sure how to pronounce your name. I really appreciate the presentation and especially the demonstration of the mapping tool. It was extremely helpful. Um, I was very involved with the districting back in 2017 and 2018. And have continued to keep up on the changing laws. Um, I do have a question because I was a little confused with the recommendation from the, the staff. Of establishing a hybrid independent redistricting commission. Um, my understanding is it's either hybrid or it's an independent. Of course, my preference and recommendation is an independent redistricting commission. So I'm happy, I'm extremely happy to see that on the list. Um, I also want you to know that the South San Mateo County League of Women Voters does support Menlo Park. And an independent, um, redistricting commission. And, uh, we will get a letter to you by the time you have your next meeting. And you vote on your resolution before that happens. Um, so again, thank you and, um. Oh my goodness, I didn't use up all my time.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on item C1. And seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, City Court Karen. And again, uh, thank you to the GeoInoble team for, for the presentation. Um, and for all the work you guys have, have put into this. Um, so the way I wanted to, I, I think. Uh, Councilmember Mueller still hasn't joined, correct? Um, so the way I, I want to sort of cycle through and, and. Through the council and then when it's, it's your turn, you, you. You go through all of your, at least initial questions, uh, for, for, for either staff or for, um, the, the consulting team here. Um, and then we can, after all the questions, maybe, uh, sort of structure. And a, a discussion around tho- those issues that seem most, most pertinent, um, are most, most top of mind for, for council. And then we all sort of see the extent to which we can give some general direction to, uh, to, uh. To, to staff on, on this item. So, um, is there, is there someone who wants to, wants to go first with their, their questions? Okay, Vice Mayor Nash, thanks.
Thank you. Um, I thought it was a terrific presentation. I actually don't have many questions. Um, I love the mapping tool. But I guess the first, um, one question that I do have is just if we can get a little more clarity from staff. I was surprised to see a recommendation and I'm sort of, um, curious as to what went into that consideration. And exactly what, what is the recommendation?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, I can, uh, assist in answering that hopefully. Um, the recommendation from staff is to do the hybrid of the commission, um, independent advisory commissions. Uh, this was selected, um, because it does allow an independent body to draw up the maps, engage with the public. Um, and then return two or more maps for City Council consideration or adoption, which is, um, we wanted to give the City Council options, which is why staff had recommended a hybrid model.
And so, um, I guess the next question is to Mr. Sands, but, um, which is just. To be clear, so the independent, the difference between an independent, actually, could you please just state? Um, what the differences between an independent and a hybrid? Um, commission, please.
Yeah, so, um, actually, uh, I'd like to pass off that, that one to, uh, our demographer, Jesus Garcia. Um, he, he'll be able to provide. I, I was able to provide a, um, an overview, but if you have any details, um, he can provide those details. Jesus?
Can you guys hear me? Um, basically the difference between the independent commission and the hybrid commission is that in the independent commission. Board, uh, hands over authority to commission, uh, to conduct the, most of the process. For instance, the, the city of Los Angeles has an independent commission and a few others. And so in that case, the board removes itself from the process. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm sure you can, you know, state your, your, your likeness for one thing or another. So that's one of the primary goals. Now, many independent commissions have been brought into place by the electoral process. So for instance, where the, you know, it would be on a ballot. And then people would vote it into, and this, these things happen, you know, two, three, four, five years ago. So in most independent commissions, it takes a while.
Excuse me, Mayor Combs.
Uh, Councilmember Taylor, yeah?
I'm unable to hear. Very clearly.
Yes.
Yeah, if, if you could sort of lean into mic, it is a, is a.
Okay, is this, is this better?
No.
Yeah.
Can I talk louder? Louder, it works? Okay, I'll, I'll speak, I'll, I'll speak up louder. Basically, an independent commission. The, the jurisdictions, the city council supervisors, um, acquiesce their authority to the independent commission. Um, and the, the commission handles the process entirely. You know, from, from, from the mass to consideration of the boundaries and the like. Many independent commissions were, were put into place through the electoral process. Uh, you know, there'll be a petition where, you know, the city or the county would vote for an independent commission. That's basically how California has its independent commission back in, uh, you know, 2010. So that, that's, that's the main reason for an independent commission. Uh, the hybrid commission, uh, again, as Alex stated, it still allows the community to engage in the entire process. There are members that are assigned to go out and meet, meet with the public, uh, you know, interact. We will have the dashboards, we'll have the districter tools, where all of these maps come into, come into play. And then from that, uh, the commissioners, or not the commissioners, but the members of this committee would then, you know, recommend. To the boards, uh, you know, the two or three maps that would be utilized. Uh, Fresno County, I'm not Fresno County, Tulare County, right now appears to have a very good process for community engagements. And, and, and then at least in Tulare County, the, um, it's, it's a large county, some rural, some urban. But the members of the committee are able to interact with the public, uh, besides their standard meetings that they would all, it'd be independent from, you know, the city council meetings here. But they can go meet with community groups, with organizations, you know, go to the county fair, go to, you know, wherever they, they're, they're, they can. To interact with the public. So in, in many cases, the hybrid is, uh, it's a good option because it engages both with the public. But also, you know, uh, with the creating selections. Now, the process for any of these is the same. The data is the same. Uh, the maps will probably be the same. You know, there, there's only so many ways to really, you know, slice, slice this mold up. And so, um. But we will be interacting with the community, with, uh, you know, folks in common cause, with the PTAs, you know, the, uh. We haven't talked about communities of interest, you know, there's probably 20 other communities of interest out there. And we want to hear from all of them. Uh, and then they together will collectively come up with a map, you know, for instance, we could have, you know, 50 maps that come pop up in the dashboards. That Alex will be creating. They'll all be there for people to look at. And so our, our hope, at least with the dashboards. And, uh, with the data reports that we will generate is ultimate transparency of anything that comes in. Will be available very quickly for the community at large to, to look at.
So essentially they're exactly the same except in, with the independent, the map is presented as a final map to the council. And in the, um, hybrid, the council is presented with two maps, which the. Council then chooses between the two. Is that when?
In the independent mode, you acquiesce all responsibility to the commission to bring to you, uh, their recommendations. That, that's, that's one of the main differences, uh, between the two. But in the hybrid, again, you have a commission, they provide two or three and then they perform. So they're very similar. Again, if you have a, 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 a collegial relationship in your community. Which, you know, it's almost shouldn't be a, a, a problem. Um, but, uh. Again, the process is very similar. Uh, the maps are similar, the data is the similar. Uh, but in the independent commission, the board acquiesces all responsibility to, to the commission.
And if I could just, I'll just, um, add on to that, Vice Mayor Nash. Um, so in the hybrid, um, maybe the, hopefully this will help. But, um, the two maps, that's just a minimum. They are, they are, um, able to, um, submit more maps to the council if, if they would like to. Um, it could be, it, the, the only restriction is at least two. So it could be two, it could be 20. And then the, like, like Jesus said, in the independent commission, um, the commission takes full control of the process. The hybrid commission, it's a slightly different, but the formation and the, the approval of maps is very similar.
So I'm still trying to tease out exactly what it means when the, um, commission takes complete control of the process. What is the final? Um, what does it look like to council at the, at the end? I, I believe I understand the hybrid. What is the independent?
The independent commission paints the map that goes forward.
So essentially they are presenting a map to council and that is what is the final, the final version. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Do you acquiesce your authority over the process?
Thank you.
Well, is, is that all your questions, Vice Mayor Nash?
Um, I actually may have, um, other people's questions may trigger another question for me. But at this point, I think I will, yes, um, I, I.
Totally fair. Um. Okay, let's go to Councilmember Wilson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Combs, and I thank you for that presentation. Um, building off Vice Mayor Nash's, um, questions. Uh, as you were describing kind of the community outreach and going to the PTAs and the county fairs and stuff. Doesn't that happen in both types of commissions? That seems like it was only described as taking place in the hybrid commission. Is there any reason why that wouldn't be taking place on an independent commission?
Yeah, so that, um, that, that could, that could take place on, on both. Again, uh, GeoNoble, we, we would not be the ones, um. Doing the outreach, then, you know, that would be the commission, you know, engaging in that outreach with the community. And, um. Yeah.
Was there any reason why? Because it, it sounded like in the description that that was a major feature of the hybrid, but not of the independent. Am I interpreting that correctly or are they potentially the same in terms of that outreach? Or is there an actual difference in that?
Community engagement is a separate process and we will be providing, we will be providing.
Could you speak up?
Yeah, we, the, we will be providing the tools through the districter option for the, it'll be, it'll be available 24/7. For any community member or organizations to present their, their maps. Uh, now the city, uh, or the commission can host meetings outside of the Board of Supervisors. So some places have 20 meetings, others have three meetings. So. What's happening again in some of these other locations is there'll be an independent group that requests a meeting. And then folks from the commission would go there. So the, the collection of, of information from the public. Is the same and we are creating tools such as the districter tool and other tools potentially. For people to contribute their thoughts on the maps and their communities of interest.
Okay, so, um, I, I think I, I, I think I'm, um, asking the same question then as Vice Mayor Nash. That, that it's really just at the end of the process that the difference lies? I, I don't, because, because again, the way it was described and, um, and that wasn't, uh, I appreciate your answer, but it wasn't totally addressing my question. In the process itself. Uh, is there a difference in the hybrid in getting the outreach and getting the maps? Is there a difference in a hybrid versus an independent?
The community outreach effort, it's, it's going to be conducted by the cities or by the independent commission. However, they want to engage with the public. It's the selection of the final map. That under the independent commission is done by the commission, whereas in the hybrid. The city council is presented with three or four options, or five options, and they pick from one of those.
So, so in an independent situation, because our staff does a lot of the outreach work. So if, if it's a hybrid, does our city staff have more input than if it's an independent one where the commission members themselves are doing that?
Jen, if I could just chime in, so I think it goes back to sort of like control. So. Uh, if, if it's an independent, that commission will determine the outreach and they will determine the engagement with staff. Like if it's a hybrid, council still has a certain amount of control. And so then they can themselves institute as part of this process, a specific. Community engagement plan. The council cannot do that with an independent, uh, commission. So they can be exactly the same. They could have the exact same types of engagement ultimately irrespective of, of the route you go. But who gets to determine that engagement is different. And then to become commission, they are completely independent and they determine that engagement. Um, the staff can't, it, it is the, the commission that would dictate the staff or consultants, the type of engagement they want to see. Again, when it comes to a hybrid, the City Council, uh, can, can dictate as part of it, some, my sense or understanding can, can dictate an engagement plan.
Um, so I, I have a question for our, our city staff, I, I probably to Clay Curtin, who, um, oversaw this process in 2018. Um, so in, in 2018, we used an advisory commission. Um, and I believe there was outreach conducted. So was that outreach plan formulated? Did that come to the City Council for approval or to the commission for approval? Or did staff just execute it with a consultant?
Good evening, uh, Councilmember Wilson. I was unable to hear your question.
So, um, can you hear me?
Yes, I can now.
Okay, so, um, back in 2018, when we had an advisory commission. And we did, uh, public outreach. Was the public outreach plan, um, weighed in on by the City Council? By the Advisory Commission? Or was it completely staff-driven?
Um. I would say a little bit of everything. So we, we had a very compressed process because of the. The safe harbor constraints that we were in at the time. Um, but we, we had all of the advisory committee meetings over, I think, an eight-week period or something. And, uh, we were meeting with them once or twice a week and getting feedback, uh, throughout the process.
But in terms of doing outreach to community groups or advertising. That type of public outreach?
Yeah, at, at that time, uh, the, the committee meetings that were advertised, the public hearings, that was in such a, such a constrained timeframe, that those meetings were the outreach. In addition to mailing and we did some signage. But it wouldn't, it was nothing like what I anticipate we would be able to do in this situation where we've got, uh, six months or a year.
Okay, thank you. And, um, are, I have a question. Are you looking for feedback tonight also on, um, criteria or just like, um, for commission members? Um, or only on what type of commission we're seeking?
Thank you, City Councilmember Wilson. So yes, we are looking for, um, city council to let staff know which model you want to go forward with. And then staff will return with a staff report, um, seeking, you know, further city council direction on that, how that process looks. But for tonight, we're just looking for which model the city council wants to pursue for redistricting.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Thank you very much.
So, uh, my question is, um, is, is the independent option like, um, sort of a one-way street, once you go down at your, your sock? Like, is, cause obviously with the other options, there is still some council involvement. And so i- if things seemingly are going off the rails, you have that ultimate sort of lever of the council stepping in. But within independent commission, obviously, you can't, council plays no, no role. And so what happens if, if there's a scenario where there's an independent commission? And, um, for lack of a better description, things are not going well. Like what are the levers that are, that are available to council to then sort of, uh, engage in the process to sort of get things going more smoothly?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. That's a great question. I may have to defer to either Geo Novo team or even our city attorney. I do not know, uh, kind of with timing and things like that, if the city council wanted to switch gears midstream, if that would be doable. I mean, because of the delay in the census, it has given us, uh, our timeline a little bit more flexibility. But I would be, uh, concerned about if we started with one and then tried to transfer into another, what that would do to our timeline and, um, and of course with transparency, just trying to keep processes as clear as possible.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. Councilmember Taylor, did you have, uh, a question? If, if not totally fine, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. No, at this time I don't have any questions.
Vice Mayor Nash? And then, and then Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you. Um, I guess with an independent commission, um, what feedback is given to the community? What feedback is given to council? For example, your question where you were wondering, um, if it's going off the track, would we even, you know, how? Would council even know what is happening in a commission?
So, Christ, they're, they're public meetings no matter what. And so if, if someone's showing up and, and
Good point.
And people are going at it, then you'll, you'll read articles and so you'll know.
Thank you. Good point. And then, um, the other question is, um, what role does the city attorney play in each of these commissions?
The, our client continues to be the city. And so to the extent the commission is an independent commission, the city attorney's office would not advise the independent commission. We will ultimately advise on recommendations that are brought to the city council under either an advisory or hybrid model. But we wouldn't do that under an independent commission, um, option.
And then I guess I have one last question. Actually, let's let Councilmember Wilson go and I'll follow up if he's.
Um, my question is trying to answer potentially Mayor Combs' question, the question of a question. So if things take a turn and, um, if I'm looking at the last, um, time we did this and our resolution, there was something in there, uh, section 11 administration, where the city council or committee may remove a mem- a committee member for substantial neglect of duty, gross misconduct in office or inability to discharge the duties of office. So, um, I don't know if this is a question for city staff or to Novo, um, but how, how would that get exercised? And, and can you elaborate on that? Cause it seems to be a check.
But, but that was a different commission format, that, that, if you're talking about the last time we did it, that was an advisory commission.
Oh, so would that not be available?
That's a good question.
That's my question.
Okay. I can't answer it.
Good evening, Starla Robinson, City Manager. So I think if the consultants could answer that question, I, the staff is, we're not experts in this area. So can I ask the consultants to weigh in on this?
Sure, yeah. So, uh, can you, can you repeat the question just so I, uh, make sure, make sure I'm understanding it correctly?
Well, I think it comes down to like, can the council still remove, uh, an independent commissioner? Like, right, and so are, does that removal has to take place within that commission? Like, if, if someone was, you know, I, I don't know. Let's just say a member of the commission was like arrested, right, and no longer maybe available. Like, does the commission then sort of have the authority or power? Or can council say, oh, this person, let's, let's remove this person from the commission? And in, in, in the case of an independent, a completely independent commission?
Yeah, no, that, that's a great question. So, um, I'm, I'm not sure if that would be something that, uh, that we have as the, as a, as a redistricting consultant, but I'll go ahead and defer that one to Mrs. Garcia.
Excuse me, Mayor Combs?
Yeah.
If I may, I believe Helen Greco from Common Cause may have information about this.
Yeah, and I, I saw that her hand is, was up. And so I was going to reopen public comment. And if, if we feel that like we've exhausted, um, our knowledge here, uh, then, then I'm, I'm happy to, to reopen public comment now, um, to take that comment. So, so, so maybe we'll, we'll do that. So, so City Clerk, uh, Karen, can you call for public comment?
Of course. So this time we'll be reopening public comment for item C1. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in, you may press a star nine now. Helen, I don't see your hand up, but I'm going to ask that, uh, you can unmute yourself now and, and.
I'm sorry, I thought I had it up. So can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, the first thing I want to say is that in 2018, we had a committee. It was an advisory committee, not a commission. And we can go into the rules about your commissions and why a committee was used for that process. So I just want to clear that up. It's an important distinction. Second of all, I want to say that it's important to see that an independent commission does operate independently in that they, uh, choose and adapt the map separate from any input from the council. And that was said once, but I just want to make that clear. So a hybrid is a relationship between community engagement and then essentially do a lot of the work. And the city council then makes the decisions. Now, the question about, um, what power does the city council have when it's an independent commission? If it's quote, going off the rails? There are, I mean, the commission has to, um, it's appointed, you have an application process. You, you set the parameters of what they're supposed to achieve. And if, and there's always a clause, and thank you, um, uh, Councilmember Wilson for identifying that if there is some dereliction of duty, the commission itself can remove the member. You can also put in a clause that the council can be part of removing the member. So you have the discretion to decide that. But yes, there is always a provision. Somebody could die, something could happen, you have alternatives for that reason. So you do want a mechanism in place to make sure they are living up to the rules and expectations of their service. And to ensure that if there is some health crisis or whatever, you have an alternative. And I'm happy to be available because I must say that I'm just hearing some things that there's a little misunderstanding about information. So, um, I'm trying to be of service here and make sure I can step in and say, oh, wait a minute, let me give an explanation for that. So I believe at this point, that's what I'll say for right now. So thank you. Please feel free to call upon me again.
Thank you, Helen. Much appreciated. Um, and then Pamela Jones?
Evening again and thank you. I think that most of the questions, uh, that are being asked are answered in chapter nine, section 23003. And I'm looking at H through I. And essentially it says that the commission, and it's referring to all of them, shall be subject to the same redistricting deadlines, requirements and restrictions that would otherwise apply to a legislating body. A local jurisdiction may also impose additional requirements and restrictions on the commission. So in that part, that's your guardrails. That's how you prevent the commission from falling off the, the track, you know, however that's being used. So I think it's important to, to, to read all of these legislations, because there's new pieces. And the way they fit together can sometimes be confusing, especially if we're trying to compare to 2018, because the laws have changed since 2018. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela.
Hi, this is Jesus. Can I add that, uh, whether it's an independent permission, the city or, or the hybrid, you, um, you are the clients for Geo Novo, in the process. And so the process of data analytics and presentation of, of available maps and collection will remain the same. But as far as the structure of the governing organization, um, that's not part of what, um, you know, you, you are, you are responsible for that, that component of it. However, you want to see it, that we will be generating the same level of service and maps and analytics, no matter who, no matter what type of organizational structures.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia, for that, that clarification. Um, City Attorney Doherty, is there something you want to add?
If you don't mind, uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I wanted to, um, dovetail on a few comments that were just made. But I, I think one piece that, um, is being slightly overlooked here is that the council establishes this commission through resolution or ordinance, whatever commission you decide to establish. And that resolution can set out many of the parameters that you're asking about this evening. Um, as far as the, the removal of commissioners, uh, on an independent commission being at the discretion of the city council, I don't know the answer to that. But generally speaking, the statute allows the city council to impose, um, many criteria, even on the independent commission. What the council may not do under the statute is approve the map as to, once an independent commission is established. But the council can direct public outreach, can direct, um, additional public meetings beyond the minimum that are required under the statute. And can specify the, um, means and the manner in which commissioners are appointed.
So, but just from my understanding, you, uh, City Attorney Doherty, like in the independent, um, commission model, the city council can still like sort of direct engagement with regards to, to you, you know, the, the, the work product of, of the commission. Cause it would seem like, I, I mean, I don't know, obviously it was just like, it's like, is, is the independent commission in control or not? Right, right? I, I would think that it's not just that like their map is, is final, but that they actually, if, if, again, like to your point, it's a resolution and so you can make it whatever you want to. But it would seem like, eh, as you're adding those items, if you're sort of limiting the commission or giving the council more of a, of a say, then it really is sort of shifting every little bit to, to, to more of a hybrid model. Uh, then what would truly be independent?
Yeah, I think, I think that's absolutely right. There are limits. The idea is that there can be parameters that are, that, that don't convert the independent commission into a hybrid commission, um, which could include certain public outreach parameters and additional public hearings and appointment procedures. But, but yes, I, I agree with you. I think typically, um, if the council wants to retain oversight over the commission, then the independent commission is not the appropriate commission.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, yeah, if anything, I, I think the idea is that like it's certainly not, not black or white, right? It, it seems to be like a bit of a scale, uh, right? And certainly their, their key, uh, notches on, on that, on that scale, like independent, hybrid. You know, advisory, but, but then I think even in between them, there is, um, you know, there are some elements that, that you could, you could take, um, or use. Like, any, any, uh, other, other council questions? I think certainly, obviously part of this exercise is to, to, to provide, uh, staff some, some direction. And so I would, like, if, if there are no more questions, sort of go around again and just get a sense of where, where, where people are at. Vice Mayor Nash?
Um, I just want to state that I think this is one of those decisions that it would greatly benefit from all five council members, which I realize we do not have at this point. But I think that, um, districting is something that's so critical to us, that we actually do need all five of us present for any districting decisions. And I, I
Well, we're
Do with that, I'm just.
Yeah, I, I'll tell, in, 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 in an academic sense, in theory, spiritually, I'm all there with you. As, as the person, at least for this year, that is responsible for her agenda. I, I, again, I, I just, we're, we're, we're not going to be revisiting. When we revisit this, it will be based on, um, you know, something certainly more, more fleshed out. And, and, you know, the council member Mueller had other commitments. And so, um, and, and so that, that, that is where we are. City Attorney Doherty?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind all of us, and I think you already just spoke to this, Mr. Mayor, but we, we're not establishing a commission tonight. This is just a direction for the staff to come back with further details on, um, the resolution that would establish the commission.
Thank, thank you. City, City Manager Jerome Robinson?
But, but I appreciate the input because for the, we were planning to bring this back on the meeting of July 20th, which is the council's next scheduled meeting. But we currently only have three council members attending that meeting. So it would mean that we would push it to a future meeting, potentially mid to late August. So I just want to make sure that the council's aware of that. And hopefully that's not a time crunch, uh, towards the end. But if we don't get the data until September or October from the census, I don't know that it will be a problem.
Thank you, uh, City Manager Jerome Robinson. Well, I'll just sort of, uh, jump in with sort of where I, I'm, I think I'm landing. Obviously, we're not sort of making any decisions, um, tonight. I, I think I gravitate more towards the hybrid, uh, the hybrid model, which, which is the, the staff, the staff recommendation. Again, Mike, and I think if there were like a history of, of sort of, um, redistricting shenanigans in, in Little Park, um, then I, and, and, or if we were a very, very, very large community where you thought that there was a really significant pool of, 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 of really sort of informed and engaged and knowledgeable people, um, who would also then have the time, that, then, that, that you might get in larger communities, then I, I would possibly feel more comfortable going, uh, independent, given that that has been described as, as, as the gold standard. But, but I really do think that, that, um, I have concerns with completely turning over this process to, uh, a, you know, a, a commission or a group of residents who, you know, haven't been, um, elected. And, and again, in the absence of, of like, you know, past history of, of, I think, redistricting issues in the community. that, that might then lead you to, to sort of prefer an independent commission. Also, again, what is, what is top of mind for me is, or what is very current is, is that we, we have very recently had a scenario with a resident-led committee that I, it was clear sort of was losing its direction and didn't quite understand how it fit as far as the deliverables that were being expected of it, or certainly understood it, but decided that it just wanted to go in a different direction. And, and, and there was a limitation of staff to, to kind of bring that in, and it was necessary for, for council to get involved. And, and, and so my concern is, 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 as, as was sort of alluded to in some of my questioning, is, is that if you really have an independent situation, my concern is, 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 is something going off the rails and, and there really being no lever for, for, for council to sort of bring it back in. And, or if there is a lever, that it's going to be a lot, lot more of a of a, of a, of a, an ugly process for, 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 even if there are certain elements in the resolution that allows for, for then council to insert itself. If, if things are really like not going well, whereas in a hybrid model, since at the end of the day, it is council who's making the final decision, it, it, it becomes, again, like I say, less, less costly that, that engagement, that certainly would be in the case of, like I said, if council is interning itself into, into what was initially established as a fully independent process. So that's where I'm landing. I'm happy to hear where my, my colleagues are. Whoever wants to take a next. Councilmember Wilson.
Sure, I'll go. Thank you, Mayor Combs, and I have to say, given recent events, I've been much more consider, I don't know, my words are jumbled, but the, I looks like the consultant wants to jump in. Did you have a comment you wanted to make before? No, okay. Okay, um, I have considered more the hybrid than I thought I would be considering, given some, some recent events with some of our, our committees. That being said, I feel really strongly about having an independent commission. I, I just, to me, it's fundamental to our democracy and I'm, I'm very encouraged that there are some guardrails and some checks and balances that we can write into the resolution. I, I'm hopeful that we won't have to exercise them and that the situation that, that we're, we're discussing is, is more of an exception than a a norm. And I think we have residents who are eager and willing and wanting to engage. And as someone elected, I just have, I, I just can't insert myself into a political process. And to me, it's really a kind of that, that last decision, that's the, the tipping point for me. And, and feeling like I have any touch of the scale. So I'm definitely leaning for the independent commission. Even though on the spectrum, it might start moving more towards hybrid, once we look at the ordinance and the resolution. But it's that final vote, I think that's really important to keep in residents' hands. But I, I absolutely respect where you're coming from, Mayor Combs. Thank you.
Can I add also that under the Fair Maps Act, there are many requirements that need to be followed. Meetings, you know, before, a meeting before, meetings on Saturdays, outreach to disenfranchised communities. So, so there are, there are stipulations that whatever selection process you have has to be followed. And so again, GeoNova is, is through its redistricter tools and through our, our dashboards are trying to be as transparent as possible about whatever information the public forwards to us. We will, you know, somebody puts a map up there, we'll, we'll make it available. Some, you know, groups want to put up 20 maps, we'll, we'll make them available. So the process again does not change on our end, and we have the Fair Maps Act, that is the guiding for the process here in California for cities and county board supervisors.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Before we go to the rest of the council, City Attorney Doherty, you, you were saying in the independent sort of commission situation, your firm represents the city. And so do we hire a, an attorney for the independent commission? Like what sort of legal counsel are they getting, if any?
They, they work with the demographers and the demographers advise them on, on the various matters that Jesus just mentioned.
And so if there's a legal issue that, that arises, or they feel that they're in a moment where they need some legal counsel, who do they go to?
I don't know the answer to that. My understanding is that typically the demographers advise them and the demographers would respond to any of those legal questions regarding consistency with the various statutes directing.
But then, so their in-work product, that, that map, if the city is sued because of that map, is that something that, that your firm represents the city?
Yes.
At, at that moment, because it becomes then the map of the city.
Correct.
But we, as they're sort of working through, if there's some, we don't know like where, if, if there is a scenario where, where there is some need for legal counsel, where that will come. Okay, totally fair. Vice Mayor Nash, Councilmember Taylor, do either of you want to weigh in? Vice Mayor Nash?
Thank you. So I think I agree with everything that's been said. I came in with a very strong desire to have an independent commission and I have, I have wavered, but I still am holding to that. I guess I would like more information as to exactly what will essentially what power the council has in the hybrid and in the independent commission, and just more information there. But bottom line is, I really feel strongly that the politicians should, you know, that we should not be be overseeing the map. But I am very I certainly am hearing the, the concerns and feeling the concerns about just the process. I just I, I'm, at this point, I am strong on the independent now.
Okay, um, let's go to Councilmember Taylor and, and Mr. Science. Is, is your hand up? And after Councilmember Sheila, I'll, I'll cycle back to you.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Initially, I was going to say, well, why don't we just bring back both the independent and the hybrid, since it's just choosing two out of the five options to look at. But I, I really wanted to support Vice Mayor Nash, and I know you responded to this, Mayor Combs, just about Councilmember Mueller not being here and this being, this possibly being on a July 20th meeting, but may not now. So if there was support for a, the hybrid option from Councilmember Mueller, I would support saying, look at both of them. Because then at least two of us are supporting it, looking at the hybrid. So, so I don't know, I'm kind of on the fence, but I, I think it's a good idea that we actually look at both instead of just one, even though I am leaning towards the independent.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Taylor, Mr. Science.
So just in regards to the, just to build maybe a little bit on City Attorney Doherty's comment about the demographer's role advising the, the commission, especially in the case of the independent commission. Regardless of the model that's chosen, our role is to, well, I guess the guidance that we will be providing as the demographer is to just make sure that any, any map submissions, any anything that's, any decisions that are made by the commission, the, the districts that are, are following the, the criteria and the law set by the Fair Maps Act, California Voting Rights Act, any, anything, anything else that would be related to other other legal items that are not specifically related to redistricting, we would not be providing guidance on, on those types of issues.
But what about like sort of like Brown Act stuff, public meetings? Who, who provides an independent commission that guidance?
Yeah, so on the Fair Maps Act, there's a certain number of meetings that are, that are required at certain times to enhance access to the community. So for example, at least one of the meetings has to be held on, on a weekend. One week, one, at least one meeting has to be held in the evening, you know, after, after business hours to allow, you know, people who might not be able to
So, so not to, to, to cut you off, but like who's telling them that like, oh, like four or five of you guys can't get together, you know, for, for, for drinks after, and, and then talk about the meeting, like who's, who's giving that, that direction in that council? I'm going to go to the, the city attorney.
Yeah, I, I don't have a good answer other than
Okay.
I was going to say that I will report back on that very good question, and I apologize that I just have not encountered that question before, but it's a good one and I'll get back to us.
Okay, again, it goes back to, and it not, it, it goes back to, again, in a hybrid, the council, the staff is ultimately responsible and has some control over, over, over the process. And independent, it is, is, if it's truly independent, then all of this should be independent, and they actually should have their own separate council, right? And they should have their own separate consultants that come in and give them the instruction regarding sort of the Brown Act and, and public meeting requirements and all of those things. And, and if it is independent, and so I think that that, that, that's just my concern. City Manager Jerome Robinson.
So I, it's also my understanding that in either case, the staff is working either with the hybrid or with the independent. But in the independent model, then we'll just have to tell the council, sorry, we can't work on that project because we're working with the independent commission and we'll be working with them. So it does mean that there, the staff is still responsible for doing the community engagement and, and the community meeting.
Yeah. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. It's, it's my understanding that the legislation requires a Brown Act training. So if the, the demographers aren't required to provide it, then it would still be required by the city.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, that, that sounds okay to me. I'm, I'm just saying, I, I want City Clerk Erin.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I'm just kind of responding to that. City staff would still be the staff for an independent or a hybrid. That's my understanding of it. So when it comes to Brown Act training and making sure that these meetings are noticed properly and things like that, it wouldn't be in the hands of the demographer, but it would be in the hands of city staff. And then again, to City Manager Starla Jerome Robinson's point, you know, my staff is too. So just kind of understanding that, you know, we still do have a role in either of these commissions, in any of the commissions. Staff would be involved in any of the examples that were provided in all five in some way, shape or form. So.
And what's sort of the chain of report if staff is seeing something, or there's some engagement or something that staff feels is not happening correctly? Our meetings are becoming disruptive. Like what does staff do in that, that situation?
If it was for like an independent, my assumption would be we'd want to capture, you know, kind of in the resolution, what, what needs to be happening. And then between staff and the demographer guiding the independent to do those things. And then again, if there was something put into the resolution where if, you know, X, Y, and Z happened, then the city council needs to be notified and, and brought to the table, I, I assume that that would be appropriate. And then with the advisory, or the hybrid rather, the city council would have that opportunity to be involved.
Okay, well, thanks. Vice Mayor Nash?
So I actually was just confused by the city manager's comments about staffing because on, in the staff report, it actually looks like the independent commission is has essentially the same level of effort for both the independent and the hybrid. And that in fact, there's less effort by the council, but that everything else looked similar on this on a crude scale of one to three, realizing that that doesn't give us much distinction. So I guess I'm wondering, how is the, what is the difference in outreach that you see with the hybrid versus independent, please?
I, the difference I see is that the council's no longer in charge of the staff time. Right? What, when we're working with the independent, if we were to work with an independent commission, then we need to they're, they're really directing our time on that project.
Can you please explain a little bit more? I'm, I'm still a little bit, because they still, I mean, it, it's still essentially the same public outreach. You're just saying that there's no staff essentially is doing what the commission is requesting and there's no intermediary, any
Well, I think, if I can, I, I think Vice Mayor Nash, the city manager is also saying essentially the request of the commission would likely be prioritized over everything else in sort of a work plan, because it is coming from an independent commission. Whereas if it's something else, then, you know, it's like, well, we'll do a little of this and there, and, and maybe the council can have some involvement in how that gets prioritized. But I think, you, you, you know, because then you don't have the council setting that, then I think the staff says that they don't want to be the determining, determining how this gets prioritized. And so they're just saying it would, everything that they ask for would be prioritized, which makes sense, like, right? And as far as the approach.
Mayor Combs, I just wanted to note I've joined the meeting.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Mueller. So I do go, so, so to Councilmember Taylor's earlier comment, Councilmember Mueller has, has joined. And I, I do, Councilmember Taylor, hear you on this idea of like, you know, what does it look to bring back? You, you know, both options in, in a kind of more formalized state. But I also don't want to waste the staff's time. If, if it's clear that the majority, that there's a majority support for one option, then, then I do think that there's sort of an obligation to say in, in the setting, hey, this is where the majority is. And, and so your direction is to go and formulate how this would look around this particular option. And so if it's the independent, then it's the independent. If it's, if it's hybrid, if it's hybrid. But, but I just don't want to, and maybe it would be a lot of additional staff time, but I also don't want to sort of like you, you know, engage in a process where, where staff is sort of wasting their time when we all sort of know where we are on this issue and, and, and we're like sort of not really looking to, to, to move. Councilmember Mueller, we, we sort of went around and, and, and gave our sense of where, where we're all at. I, I think as, as it seems to be landing, Vice Mayor Nash and, and Councilmember Wilson were, while seeing the value of the hybrid model, still we're, we're landing on preferring the independent. Councilmember Taylor was also there to preferring the independent, but had birthed the idea of, of asking staff to come back with, with both the independent and the hybrid for when we, when we see this next. And so
Yeah, I, so I can comment. I mean, I, I, I've, I've been through this process before. I've heard the reasons why for both before. And I've also watched closely other, other jurisdictions look at this issue. And really what it comes down to for me is that at the end, so if you, if you have an independent redistricting committee, they really are independent, like you, there is no opportunity. If, if the council were to decide this has gone off the rails, or there's something amiss in this process, or something's not right, you know, you are, you know, it's an independent redistrict, it's independent. The hybrid model and, and my, the reason why that's a concern for me is because we were all elected by our constituents to represent them. And at the end of the day, a hybrid model, and, and what we did last time, candidly, was, you know, it, it had a check on that just in case. And council ended up not doing anything. We just, you know, the process worked. But if it hadn't, we had, we had a process in place whereby we could look our constituents in the eyes and say, you know, we kept a check on this because we believe there is nothing as important and say, you know, we kept a check on this because we believe there is nothing as important as your voting rights. There is nothing as important as the way that you decide who represents you. And because of that, we wanted to make sure that there wasn't a body that you elected, that you have a voice in putting there to ultimately decide it was a good process and a good outcome. And I think that that's just, for me, it's just good government to keep that check. We, as a council, can say that we're going to hold each other to a very high standard of whether or not we would do anything. And I believe candidly, this council would hold itself to an incredibly high standard before it made any decision with respect to the process. But nonetheless, we would still have that safeguard. And I think that that is, at least for myself, something that's a compact with the voter. I'm not willing to give up.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Mr. Sines.
Yeah, I can just build off of. So again, our role as a demographer, we would only be, we would all be providing guidance on the data and, you know, compliance with the federal and state voting laws. With the hybrid, with the hybrid model, which there's, you know, seems like most of the discussion is between hybrid and independent. With the, so the examples that we presented earlier, like Tulare and Fresno, on the appointments, the each board member can select, or each, yeah, each board member selects two commissioners and then staff selects one. You know, so that's one way, you know, that the appointment process can take place. But at the end of the day, regardless of the model that's chosen, our role as the demographer is only to make sure that the maps being generated is following data and the federal state voting laws.
Mr. Pégares.
I'm sorry, Mr. Merritt, appears as though I'm having camera issues. Can you hear me? Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Thank you. Just to build off of the last, off of Mr. Sines' comment, as we look at the city council calendar and agenda with our next meeting being July 20th, the selection process, regardless of which mechanism, which structure the council ultimately decides, the selection process can easily take upwards of four weeks, four to six, possibly eight weeks between recruitment, vetting, and then ultimate appointment, depending on how city council decides to make those appointments. So the only reason I bring this up is that if there is a desire to have all five council members on making the decision, we will need to, we may lose some time relative to recruiting and advertising and all of that for selection of advisory, of the members without regard to which approach council takes. Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Pégares. Yeah, I probably don't see where in the future we as city council people will be seeing, we're going to select, we're going to select our own representative to the commission, our committee. Last time, if someone from staff could chime in, right? The members of that sort of advisory commission were selected randomly, right? There was a sort of random process, if I remember correctly.
I can speak to that.
Yeah, please go, Mr. Councilmember Mueller.
So we had very strict rules about who could serve on that committee. And as a result, candidly, we were a little worried we weren't going to get enough qualified applicants. Because there was, but so once, and then, and then, you know, it was somewhat random. After, after, there was a lot of thought put in, put in into how we could make sure that there were no conflicts and sufficient, you know, sufficient concern with the process. And then after that, candidly, it was, we then took a step back and had staff just collect applications and appoint that. And I do believe it was brought back to us to look at, if my memory is correct, and it may be wrong, but if my memory is correct, it was, it was, hey, these are the people. And everyone just said, I'm not touching this, great.
Yeah, I think, thank you, Councilmember Mueller for that. I do remember, yeah, that there was, for that, the criteria for the last commission were especially stringent, like again, like that prevented people from having any sort of political activity for a certain period of time or even being related, I think in some cases, to people who had political activity in the city. So yeah, I do remember that, some of that criteria. Mr. Sines.
Yeah, I forgot who it was, I apologize. But there was a concern raised about the, if there's an appointment process that's selected by the council, just the timeframe that that would take. GNO's work as the demographer, we can continue our work on our side for the demographic analysis and production of initial maps, even while that process is ongoing. So I'm not sure, you know, I hope that that piece of information is helpful to the council in their decision-making process. But that wouldn't necessarily cause a time crunch on our end because we would still be able to continue our work, you know, on the mapping, on the demographic analysis and all that based on US Census data.
Thank you. A question for the city clerk. What does sort of bringing back both the hybrid and the independent as sort of more fleshed out options for the council? Again, like I say, I'm hesitant to go down that road because I think like, if, 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 if the fix is already in, not a fix, but if where we're going is already set, I don't want to sort of even be sort of telegraphing to the public that like, that, you know, we're still sort of making a decision when it's clear where we're at least going. But what would it look like if we were sort of, you know, to give you direction to bring back both options more fully fleshed out?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So just given kind of the conversations that the city council has been having, it might be beneficial for staff to bring back both options with more details. I do appreciate that there does seem to be more majority leaning towards the independent. However, given that you, city council member Mueller and city council member Taylor may have some interest in the hybrid, it might behoove us to just bring back both options with more detail and kind of a better scope. Again, with our meeting being on July 20th, it does kind of push things a little bit, does create a little bit of a time crunch. But again, if it would benefit the city council for, you know, myself to go back and do a staff report based on both of those options, then I'm more than happy to do that. But again, if, you know, independent, it does seem to be the way we want to go. You know, we can always just do a staff report based on independent.
Great, thank you, City Clerk Karen. And just, we won't be bringing this back on July 20th because we're only going to have three people. So it'll be pushed to some later date. So where are we at as far as the direction for, to, to staff? Is, are we comfortable with both the hybrid and independent coming back? Or is there a desire to provide staff with a very clear, a single option to follow up on? Vice Mayor Nash.
So I'm trying to formulate this question, so I apologize if it. Mayor Combs, please help me if you could. I'm trying to focus on, we're sort of focusing on the process and how we get to the final product. But I guess what I'm wondering from the consultant is how different are the final products from these various committees? In other words, it seems like there's enough requirements that there is, how different will the outcomes be? You know, what is the potential for very different outcomes, I guess?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Nash, so if I'm understanding correctly, you're asking about the potential variation in the actual district boundaries? Yeah, so as Sue's mentioned earlier, there, I mean, there's, there's only so many ways to carve out the district boundaries while still following all of the criteria and requirements for California Fair Maps Act, California Voting Rights Act. So, I mean, there obviously, there will be some variation depending on the, on the model that's chosen. But really, at the end of the day, our job as the demographer will be to make sure that any boundaries that are selected and presented to the council and, you know, as we move on through the process, that they're all in compliance with the relevant voting laws.
And then one other question, thank you for that. And that is, when you say it's presented to the council, if it's an independent commission, does the council see the map or does it go directly to the county? Or how does that work?
So, yeah, that's a great question. So the council would see the final maps regardless because all these meetings are public meetings. So, you know, just because of the nature of the meetings being public, the council would see the final maps regardless of the model that's chosen.
But would it generally take place in any sort of official presentation to the council? Or does the city court just sort of communicate to the county that this is the map? Or I'd imagine at least it would probably be on just for sort of transparency sakes, like, you know, some sort of informational item, probably. But I think that that was like sort of like the nature of the vice mayor's question.
Yeah, so towards the end of the process, there is a required official presentation to meet the standards of the California Fair Maps Act, if that helps to clarify.
Yeah, cool, thanks. Mr. Garcia.
And again, the process for each is the same. Beyond 94, the CBA data adheres to section 2 of the Federal Voting Rights Act. All those processes are the same. And then what we would do, whether again, any commission or whether a hybrid, is we would provide that with two or three, four different options and give them the opportunity to select from those. So again, we will be presenting to you viable maps that pass all federal and state laws. And then whether it's the commission or the board members select from that option. But under the hybrid, you know, those options would be forward to the city council. And then the city council would debate the merits of one or the other and select from the ones that are forward. But again, this whole process is open, it's public, and the data remains the same. Again, that's the goal that you're now listed, yes, as far as possible throughout the entire process.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Councilmember Willis.
Yeah. With all due respect to Councilmember Taylor, I would love to just make a decision tonight, if possible. I feel, as we talk more and more, I'm much more and more dedicated to the independent option. I think it's the good governance. I think it's letting the voters make the decisions and not the politicians make the decisions. And it's just, I'm ready to go on this. And I'm also, I feel like we need to come back and decide some of that criteria and some of those guardrails, so that's going to take time. And I feel like this will just punt it out further. So I'm very eager to hear from Councilmember Taylor if she felt comfortable moving forward. And then just the, to the consultants, the template to the map, I like option number one. Because we're a long, skinny city, and so a portrait is long and skinny. So that's my feedback on that really important question for the evening. Thanks.
Well, thanks for that. We could use an easy one right now.
So Councilmember Taylor, back to you. Are you? Where are you at? Are you? I'll just leave it there. Where are you at?
Thank you, Mayor Combs, and thank you, Councilmember Willis. I actually just thought of a question for the consultant, if you don't mind. And that is just your experience with municipalities as opposed to, I believe, it's school districts. So the difference between doing a districting process with the city and a difference between the districting process dealing with a school district. So just, just some thoughts. Just wanted to find out if you, if you even see a difference or would there, are you thinking of a different approach than you would if a school district versus a city?
Okay, the process for generating the maps is the same. But personally, in my experience, I've been on the other side. I've been the person that's been brought in primarily to at-large districts. And we have moved them to districts. I can disappoint you of the various options, but it's been a confrontational attitude, if you will, where we, I come in with an attorney and the community to engage them. And so that's been my experience. And so again, I will bring that here, but this time the client is the city. So our goal again is to assure you that we will provide you with masks that somebody like me on the other side wouldn't come back and say, hey, you know, you're off here or you're off there. And so that's the mindset. But as far as the data is concerned, school districts, city councils, hospital districts, one of our clients right now is the Summittale County Board of Education. You know, the process, the data, the end results are all the same. We use the same data, but in different forms.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. And Mayor Combs, I'll just, I support the independent. That way we can move on.
Okay, thank you. And so I'm going to acknowledge Councilmember Mueller now.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine if my colleagues want to go forward with that. But I just would want to, and I, Councilmember Wallace and I respect your opinion greatly. I just would want to make the comment to you all that I don't think this is actually like a question of voters versus politicians. Because when you talk about letting the voters decide, well, that's actually sending something to the polls to let all the voters decide. What this is really a question of is whether or not we're going to have a select group of unelected people make a big decision regarding how elections take place in Menlo Park with no check at all from a body elected by the voters. I mean, candidly, I would say letting the voters decide would mean having the voters' actual voice embodied in those who they voted for as at least a minimal check on the process. What we're doing right now, in my, you know, humble opinion, is just delegating away what we, you know, what we were, completely what the voters entrusted in us to be that check for good government. And we are giving it to a small group of people. And it sounds like we're not going to be really involved in picking that sound for that small group of people. And we're just going to trust that, you know, it won't go off the rails or something won't go awry. And I just candidly think that the voice of the voters in electing us expects more. So, and I'm not saying that we would, you know, I'm not saying that we would be the body that would, you know, insert ourselves into the process in any manner, but that just we would be able to at least maintain ourselves as that check in case something were to go awry. So, but it sounds like tonight, that argument has already lost. So what I wanted to make, just to make it clear for the record. And I hope that this, that this doesn't foretell the possibility of what could happen.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. So I was wondering, Councilmember Mueller, could you just describe the concerns that you have or something, you know, just theoretically, what could go that far wrong with one versus the other? What is your concern?
Do we, I mean, I'll just share, can't tell, Vice Mayor Nash, I mean, my concern is, is a very recent example. Can't tell someone, Vice Mayor Nash, I I mean, my concern is 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 a very recent example of 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 a committee. In this community, of a commission in this community. And and again, this ends up being very, very sort of the grouping self-selecting. Again, people who have the time, it it probably won't be a representative body. And and so it will be to 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 uh Councilmember Mueller's point, it won't be the voters. It'll be, you you know, specific voters or residents in the city who have the time to to do something like this. And and you you know, feel engaged enough to do it. And and so, and to me, again, like I say, you know, I have, I have concerns based on very, very recent examples. Of things going awry and and there being limited levers on on the council to sort of engage itself. Uh if if necessary, or ultimately be the final arbiter. And so, and so that that is my concern, I again, I don't know if that's where, exactly where Mr. or Councilmember Mueller is at, since we've we've lost him. But but that's a real, that's a real thing that happened, like I'm not, I'm not talking theoretical, it it really did happen. And and I was, and I'm in the middle of it, and so, so that's why I'm speaking of it.
Um, I I completely.
I'm still here, I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, all right, so so.
I'm just wondering, the end product, how is, how, you know, what is, what are the concerns about the end product? I understand what you're talking about, Mayor Combs, I'm just wondering, if looking to the end product, once again, just. We will still have districts where we will have voters electing representatives in the districts. They may be, you know, configured differently, or they would be configured differently. But it still will be voters electing. Representatives and with all of the different. It seems like there's restrictions that prevent. Just gerrymandering, very honestly, and so I'm just wondering what, you know, I I guess I'm just not seeing. I don't feel the same concern, I do share your concern about sort of the process and just that, but at the end of the day. What we're doing is we're creating maps.
But I would only.
Election maps.
Yeah, I I would only sort of say, and I'll I'll let Councilmember Mueller comment, but um I'm respecting your opinion. But you can turn that around and use that for for the position you've taken, like, you you know, if it's, if it's the end of the day, the sort of the same thing. Then why be independent, especially in a case like Menlo Park where there really isn't a, again, some communities in some states. There there is a history of gerrymandering, right, there is a history of 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 really inappropriate things happening, happening with creating districts. Since Menlo Park doesn't have that, then I think the question is, why go that 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 route? And and I respect that you you're, that that's a decision you've decided to make, but I think, like I say, you can, you can use that either way. But but I'll I'll let, we have both have been having a conversation about, which I think should be happening between you and Councilmember Mueller, and so he's here. So so we'll let, we'll let him comment.
Well, and. Look, in in election, and I mean, the fact that there, that gerrymandering does exist. Well, those, the gerrymandering that exists, exists under the laws and rules of election, of election law. I mean, the, the, there's a, there's a, uh, an assumption here. That based on status of person, whether they be an elected public servant like we are, or whether or not they be a resident. That somehow a resident is going to be uh clean of any ulterior motive. Or that they won't at some point in the middle of the process decide that they don't like something or some grudge or something. And and that that will start to become evident in the process, and you know. You can't, you know, I, I just reject the notion that somehow, you know, public servants are, you know. Have have a failing and and like, and someone who's not elected. Of by the pub, by the, by the public and doesn't have to answer to the public and will never be called onto the carpet by the public as somehow. Immune from, you know, uh ulterior motive or or making mistakes. And and either could happen, uh so, you know, that, you know, I. I think that, you know, I think, you know, what is, is there a chance is that nothing will happen? Yeah, is there a, is there a, a pretty good chance nothing will happen? Probably, but at the end of the day, we are the safe, you know, we are been voted for to be the safe keepers of this process. For the public, and so that's why I would say, look, the chances that we're going to get involved are going to be pretty slim. And given the inclination of this council, a- almost minute, but we will have the option. If something were to go awry, and I think that's a part of the public trust with which we've elected that we shouldn't let go.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller, um so does the staff have the direction that they need here, a?
Oh, just to confirm, we are going to be looking into the independent commission? Then yes, I've got all the direction I need, thank you.
Um, in any, any, any additional comments before before we adjourn? Vice Mayor Nash.
Yeah, I just want to say, I really appreciate the candid discussion we've been having, and I appreciate all the. The various viewpoints and. I think that it's, you know. We are where we are, I I. I'm trusting essentially that we will, with either process, this will be a a positive. Experience with. Just that we will have a positive outcome with either process, and I just, I appreciate the candid discussion with my fellow. Councilmembers and with staff, so thank you.
Thank you for those comments of Vice Mayor Nash, and so this is all that we had on the agenda, and so I think that it's, I I will adjourn. Everyone have have a good rest of your, your, your evenings, and again, thank you to the, to the staff from GeoNoble.
And provide the information regarding the redistricting process, we appreciate the opportunity.